All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this regular call meeting of the Temple City Council. It is 5:10. And please rise as Pastor Robert Beaman leads us in the invocation, followed by our pledge, which will be led by City Secretary Janet Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shall we pray? Father God, we thank you, God, for who you are. We thank you, God, for your leadership. We thank you, God, for your authority that is upon this earth. We ask you, God, that you would lead us and guide us in what need to be done. We ask you, God, that we consult you more than anything else. We ask you, God, that we are your people. And, God, you said if we are called by your name, if we humble ourselves and seek your face, you say you will heal our land. So, God, we ask you, God, to heal our land at this very moment. We ask you, God, that your leadership is very needed here. We ask you, God, if we need counsel, you said also, Lord, if we need wisdom, ask. So, God, we asking for your wisdom, your knowledge. We thank you, God, for the city council. We thank you for our fearless mayor. We thank you, God, for our city manager. We thank you, God, for everybody that has gathered here today. So, God, we ask you, God, that your peace and mercy will be upon us at all times, and we'll seek your face like never before. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you both very much. Next item is public comments. Citizens who wish to address the council on any matter may do so. We just ask you to step to the podium and state your name for the record. Please know that no discussion or final action will be taken, and we also ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes or so. So, first up, we have a few people that have signed up. First, we'll hear from Adam Pires. Is that right? Yes, sir. Please, welcome.
Good evening. It's my first time coming to a city council meeting. I've been living here in Temple for about two years now. And basically, just a disabled vet, I don't work or anything like that. I bought a home here and decided to settle here looking for basically my peace and serenity. So, I was a bit shocked and surprised about a year ago now, it's been almost a year since Billy Gordon was murdered by Temple Police. And we have yet to see anything about this. I mean, where's the body cam footage? We haven't seen the body cam footage. And I've looked through the records request. Several people have requested that body cam footage, and it just keeps getting blocked. And I understand, well, it's an active investigation. But I mean, at this point, the Texas Rangers should be done with their investigation. And not only that, I mean, this is a point of transparency, you know? Like, here I am, I'm a disabled veteran. I mean, what if I had some kind of a PTSD episode and my neighbor calls? Do I have to worry that the Temple Police are going to come and murder me because I'm having a mental health episode? So, anyways, I'm just here to petition the city, release the body cam. Quit denying everyone's requests and FOIA for that, because I think that the residents should know what happened that night. Anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. CJ Grisham.
CJ Grisham, Temple, Texas. Wanted to talk about the budget that's getting ready to go into effect. Before I do, did any of y'all vote against that budget? Who voted against it? Was it unanimous? Okay. So, people of Temple, come the next election, there should be a completely different city council up here, because every single one of them voted to increase your taxes. Is it okay if I talk about that? Am I allowed to have an opinion on this, Mr. Mayor? Something that... Okay, I just want to make sure it's okay. City attorney, am I allowed to talk to the city council? Are you going to let me?
I'm representing a client here today.
I'm talking about taxes. Okay. Yeah, so what happened is our city council just voted to increase taxes, an average of about $240 a year. And you might think, okay, that's 20 bucks a month for an average home. But a lot of the homes that are being built today are not $220. So, you're actually looking at about $40 a month. And if you don't own property here, but you rent property, guess what that means? That means your lease is about to go up. That means your rent is about to go up. That means 20 and $40 less, it's going to go into the small businesses in Temple, Texas, but it's going to go into the pockets of these people right here. That's where your money's going to go. It's not going to go to our small business restaurants, little gaming places, or anything like that. And every single member of the city council voted to increase our taxes when we already can't get basic services for what we got. We're abusing code enforcement at every level, is what our city's doing. If you really wanted to save money, you can stop going after people just because you don't like where they put a building or something, when it's not in violation of code. And you can stop arresting people for filming cops. You can stop trying to hide body camera footage when a police officer kills a member of the public. But it's okay to steal from you, but by golly, don't try to get that loaf of bread that you need to feed your family, okay? Because you're going to jail for a long time. And so, I just want to encourage the city of Temple, all you voters out there that are listening to this online or wherever, these are the people that are stealing money from your pocketbooks and are going to increase your rent. And if you've got a small business, expect to see a lot less people, or at least a lot less of their money, because come August, or excuse me, October 1st, everybody's going to be paying a lot more, and they're going to be spending a lot less because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. To be very clear, I have never had a dime put into my pocket. It goes into the city coffers to be used for general services. I've never cashed a check for Tim Davis, ever. Moving on is Paul Black.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am here about the bulk pickup. My name is Paul Black, and I live at 802 East Houston. I've been there 33 years. During the 33 years, there was an alley behind my house that the city has allowed people to come and dump their trash. It's been like that for 33 years. Now that the system has changed, when I called today, tried to find out if they would come and pick it up, they're trying to tell me that I would be charged for this trash in this alley. I do not own that property. I do not own the alley. And I did get in a heated argument last year with a person dumping something there. And they straight up told me, that's the city's easement, that they can dump anything there that they want to. So, I'm asking that the city go back to the once a month picking it up like they've been doing for 33 years. I'm not going to put my life at risk trying to tell strangers that they can't dump something there that do not belong to me. Now, they're trying to tell me it's my responsibility. Now, if the alley is my responsibility and the city don't want to do anything about it, I ask you that you deed that property over to me. I will hire a fencing company to come out there and just cut it completely off. I ask that they come out and put out some no dumping signs. I understand they put the flyers out, but it's obvious the people are not reading the flyers, or did not read them, or don't care. But somebody needs to put some no dumping signs there, and somebody needs to do something about their dumping since it's not allowed anymore and it's illegal. But I don't think that I should be charged for something. I don't even have a tree that don't belong to me. That's not my property. So, I'm asking the city to reconsider, do something about it, or go back to the monthly pickup of this trash, and not try to tell me that I'm responsible for that when I do not own it. So, that's all I have to say, and I thank y'all for letting me speak. This is my first time here. But I do need some help about this, because I'm not going to risk my life arguing with strangers about something that don't belong to me.
Yes, sir. We literally just left the meeting talking about that exact thing, illegal dumping. The guy right back there in the blue shirt, I suggest you give him your address, and I bet you he can help. Because the city of Temple, you probably got some bad information, because in a case of illegal dumping, the city will come out and get it picked up.
Okay, but what are we going to do about it? Because what's been happening, as soon as that truck come pick up their trash, the next day, people just start bringing stuff there and dumping it there. And, you know, like I say, it's not my trash. So, I shouldn't be responsible for it.
And I understand. And you're not responsible for it. Just let the city know that's illegal dumping, and it'll be taken care of. And in the future, for your own curbside items, it needs to be exactly that. It needs to be put at the curb.
Yes.
Never in the alley.
Yes, yes.
So, if there's a pile of stuff in the alley, it's been dumped there illegally. Probably at night, down the alley, nobody can see them.
Yeah. Like I say, it's been there for 33 years. They've been doing this for 33 years that I've been there. And now that the system has changed, I called today because there's... I have pictures, but I can't show y'all. But there's a pile there now. Now, it's not six cubic feet. The lady was saying it would have to be that claw truck, the whole load. So, it's not even that. It looked like it might be a truckload or two truckloads, just a regular truck. But I told them, well, I'll come to the meeting today and talk about it, and I'm not finna call anymore, because they're trying to charge me for something that I do not own.
Yeah. No, just tell them it's illegal dumping. Versus your... It's illegal dumping. It's someone has dumped illegally there, and it'll be picked up.
Okay, but you telling me to tell the people it's illegal dumping?
No, no, no. Don't. The people that are dumping them, leave it alone. Like I said, you're not trying to get shot. But no, call the city whenever there's a pile there and let them know.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, that happens all over town.
Okay. But I'm not going to be charged for something. Okay. Well, that's what the lady told me today when I called, the waste management deal.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds like there was just probably a misunderstanding or lack of communication there. But illegal dumping, you will not be charged for that. And unfortunately, there are sites all over town that people do that.
Yeah. But still, can the city put some no dumping signs there?
Yeah, then they'll have to work around the no dumping signs whenever they pick up the illegal, the stuff that's been dumped illegally.
No, I'm just saying, when they pick this load up, can the city put some no dumping signs there? And hopefully that they will see this and stop dumping.
Mayor, I would suggest that if Mr. Black could give his contact information to one of the staff members back there, we can help him with further information and resolution.
Now, like I told the lady, I do have cameras. But the camera is pointing at the alley, but it's not there for that purpose. It's there to protect my home. But if I start giving pictures and things like that, people are going to figure out and see that on the back of my house, and that's going to bring problems to me, and that I do not want.
Understood.
So, I'm just asking that the city help and trying to find out, was I going to be responsible for this mess? That's not mine.
Yep. Just give your address back there, and they'll get you taken care of at no charge.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank for your time.
Uh-huh. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a couple of special recognitions. The first one is to recognize September as National Preparedness Month. Chief Randalls and Ms. Henninger.
So, I actually also have my new employee, DeShawn Williams, with me as well, so.
Great. Have a proclamation.
Yes, sir.
All right.
If I may, this proclamation reads from the office of the mayor of the city of Temple. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity to remind everyone that preparing for emergencies and disasters can keep them, their families, and their communities safe. And whereas, emergencies can occur at any time, often without warning, and may result from natural disasters such as floods, wildfires, and severe storms, as well as from human-caused incidents and health-related emergencies. And whereas, preparing for emergencies can significantly reduce the loss of life and property, and help the community recover more quickly. And whereas, this year's theme, Preparedness Starts at Home, is aimed at getting residents to prepare for an emergency through education and planning. And whereas, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and to work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. Now, therefore, I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in the city of Temple, and I encourage all citizens and businesses to develop an emergency preparedness plan and to work together by staying connected and gathering the tools needed to stay prepared and to build resistance before disaster strikes. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand in the seal of the city of Temple, Texas, on this fourth day of September 2025.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that, Mayor and council. Preparedness is something very near and dear to my heart. It's something that, just a little bit of time, conversations with your family, conversations in the workplace, if something were to happen, what is your plan? What are you going to do? Just a few minutes can make a huge difference when that time comes. And it's not if, it's when, as we unfortunately have experienced in the last five years. We've all lived through COVID. We've lived through winter storm Uri, and then our tornado last year. So, we've had a lot of things happen. Thank you.
I'll just read this one from up here. Do we have anybody here for suicide prevention? Doc, come on up. Come on up.
All right. So, this proclamation reads from the office of the mayor of the city of Temple. Whereas, over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and potentially treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. Whereas, the burden of suicide is estimated to cover, I'm sorry, to cost over $510 billion in medical, work loss, value of statistical life, and quality of life costs nationally. And whereas, the negative attitudes associated with mental health conditions and suicidal thoughts and behaviors work against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk from suicide from seeking life-saving help, and further traumatizes survivors of suicide loss and the people with lived experience of suicide. Whereas, if someone can get through the intense and short moment of an active suicidal crisis, they are unlikely to ultimately die from suicide. And whereas, asking someone directly if they're thinking about suicide will not put the idea in their head, and most will be relieved that someone starts a conversation. And whereas, most people who survive a suicide attempt go on to engage in life. And whereas, everyone has a role to play in preventing suicide and can learn suicide risks and warning signs, and encourage those who struggle to seek help. Now, therefore, I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby designate September as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Temple, and I urge all citizens to educate themselves and others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Challenge stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health, seeking help if they are struggling with their mental health, and encourage others to do the same. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand in the seal of the city of Temple on this fourth day of September 2025.
Can I say a few words?
Take it. Just take it.
Thank you. So, the different notes that he touched on there, but particularly in Texas, between 2019 and 2022, Texas reported over 16,000 suicides between that time period. I'm here on behalf of the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. I live here in Temple. I've lived here just over three years. And we want to spread the word, not only to give hope to the community, our veterans in the community, but those who may not know they need the help as well or the support. I want to extend our sincere gratitude for you recognizing September as Suicide Awareness Month and Suicide Prevention Month. It's a powerful acknowledgement of suicide as a critical public health issue that touches every community, and your efforts bring hope to not only those who need it, but demonstrate that you stand behind your residents with compassion and resolve. We do have the Out of Darkness Walk in Waco on September 27th. That begins in the evening, and you can find information about the walk on the website. And I also have some flyers here if you're here through the end. But I want to thank you again for your continued support and your dedication.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come speak to the group and allow us to present this proclamation to us.
Thank you.
Want some pictures?
If you don't mind.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
All right. Moving on the consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are to be considered routine by the Temple City Council and can be enacted in one motion if discussion is desired by the council. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and will be considered separately. We have a lengthy consent agenda tonight. So, council, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, we need to remove AD.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I was moving right through. I've done that the last two or three meetings. I'm sorry. So, we will, tonight, on the consent agenda is 5A through 5AF, and we're going to remove items, I'm sorry, item 5ADA from the consent agenda for a separate vote. Counsel, any other discussion about removing anything, or do we have everything removed that we need? Everybody good? All right. Then, council, I'll entertain a motion on item 5A through 5AF, less item 5ADA.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. The consent agenda less item 5ADA passes five votes to zero. Item 5AD is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the purchase of the employee insurance policies and/or services from the following vendors for fiscal year 2026. A, medical and pharmacy plans, administrative services, and stop-loss insurance from High Plains Health Plan of Amarillo, True Scripts of Washington, Indiana, and Skyward of Houston, Texas. B, dental insurance plans from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas of Richardson. C, vision insurance from Dearborn Life Insurance Company. D, flexible spending accounts, dependent spending account, cafeteria 125 plan, health savings account, HSA Administrative Services, and Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, which is COBRA, Administrative Services from Optum Financial of Hunt Valley, Maryland, Basic Life, Voluntary Life, Accidental Death and Dismemberment, Short-Term Disability and Long-Term Disability Insurance from Dearborn Life Insurance Company, which is a subsidiary of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Richardson, and Accident Critical Illness and Hospitalization Insurance from Standard Insurance Company of Portland, Oregon. So, council, I'll entertain a motion on item 5AD, items B through E.
I'll move to approve item AD, items B through D.
I'll second it.
Or E.
E through E.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion. On the item is read in by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item 5AD, B through E passes.
Ms. Fox.
Sorry. Pardon?
Five to zero.
Five. Okay. So, that item passes five votes to zero.
So, I will... Item A is medical and pharmacy plan, administrative insurance, administrative services, and stop-loss insurance from High Plains Health Plans of Amarillo, Texas, Westboro, Massachusetts, True Scripts, Washington, and Skyward of Houston, Texas. And I'll entertain a motion on item ADA.
So, moved.
Second.
So, that item passes four votes yes, no votes no, and one extension.
Moving on to the regular agenda, is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the voluntary annexation of 7.15 plus or minus acres of land out of the Maximo Marino survey, abstract number 14, Bell County, Texas, being attractive FM 93 and 93 spur right-of-way. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. And so, this is a fairly straightforward annexation. You can see it's about seven acres, FM 93, spur FM 93. And if you see the property to the south, shown in white, that indicates that's already in the city limits. And technically, this should have been annexed when that was annexed. So, this is cleanup. But this would also allow future annexation for those properties to the north, kind of in that triangle between FM 93 and spur FM 93, if they chose to do so. And so, of course, this, it's contiguous, so this is allowed, and we're following all statutory language, which includes circulating municipal services agreement. No issues were identified. And so, staff recommends approval.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Chandler? This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the item may do so. We ask you to step to the podium and state your name for the record, or raise your hand on the virtual platform. No one on the platform?
No.
Anyone from the audience? Very good. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion on item six.
Move for approval on item six.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item six passes five votes to zero. Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the voluntary annexation of 706.9171 plus or minus acres located in the city of Temple's extraterritorial jurisdiction, Bell County, Texas, addressed as 1707 and 2351 Bob White Road. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, this, this is the 706 acres, 702 of which are privately owned, but that also includes roughly four acres along Bob White Road. So, that's adjacent to the private property shown in the crosshatched area on the map. And just so that you all know, and we mentioned this in workshop, it's more for the public, that we're working with the county right now to include the rest of that section of Bob White Road by request of Judge Blackburn, just to make sure that we have a contiguous section of Bob White, you know, for maintenance purposes and other reasons. And so, just like the previous one, this does meet statutory requirements to be contiguous with the city limits, and we provided notice and went through the process with the private property owner and received their petition to proceed. We also notified the relevant agencies and school districts, and in this case, that includes Temple ISD and Rogers Independent School District, but also Little River Academy Volunteer Fire Department, as well as Bell County. And so, municipal services agreement was circulated to all of our relevant departments, and no issues were identified. And we also do have the subsequent zoning case that would follow this annexation if approved. It's for a proposed data center. Staff recommends approval. And glad to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, sir. Counsel, anything for Brian? Item seven, subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on it may do so, or raise your hand on the platform.
No one.
No one on the platform? Anyone from the audience?
There is now.
Oh, okay. Okay. Very good. Let's hear from Mr. Lyle. Is he there? Alan, if you can hear me, you need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Try to get... Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have seen a lot of these annexations, been to the meetings here in council, as well as planning and zoning. And I'm just curious, do we ever analyze what benefits to the city will be from annexing this 706 acres, as opposed to what cost it will be for providing all the services we'll have to provide eventually?
Alan, that's actually where we start the analysis. And so, yes, that's been And so, yes, that's been considered, vetted out, return on investment's been calculated, and we are satisfied with that.
Thank you. It's never reported as far as, you know.
Understood. Anything else?
Nope, not for this then.
Okay. Thank you. We'll see you, we'll see you back here in a little bit. Anyone from the audience? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. And council, I'll entertain a motion on item number seven.
I'll move to approve item seven.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Council, please cast your vote. Item seven passes five votes to zero. Congratulations. Item eight is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning and binding site development plan request from Ag to Plan Development Light Industrial on 702.06 plus or minus acres, located in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as 1707 and 2351 Bob White Road. Mr. Chandler.
All right. Thank you, mayor. So, this is part two. Now that the annexation has been approved to rezone for a specific data center project, once again, same map, different acreage. This is 702 acres as opposed to 706, because the previous, as we mentioned, includes some of Bob White Road. The annexation, on the right, you can see proximity to landfill, another data center to the south as well. And because this is a planned development with light industrial base zoning, or the request is, includes a site plan. And so, on the site plan, you can see in purple, kind of the, or hot pink, that's the boundary, and the yellow dots would be proposed access points. We're going to spend a little bit more time talking about that, but also potential future roadway. That is the alignment of the east outer loop, according to our current thoroughfare plan, and so, more discussion on that as well. And then, last, in green, there's a electric overhead line shown just to the south of that creek. And so, when we evaluate compliance with our comprehensive plan, as you all will recall, properties outside of our city limits are pretty much always shown as rural or estate. And so, we have to evaluate adjacent uses that are in the city limits, adjacent districts. And so, looking to the right, you can see that industrial, we have the Synergy Park to the west. And so, looking at the appropriateness for this particular use in that location, you know, staff believes this is a good spot for them. And so, just a little bit of background, so, we have been working very closely with the applicant, meeting regularly with them to discuss conditions. We're in agreement with them, but there are a few items that we'll discuss in a little more detail. This would allow them flexibility, because, once again, this is a huge site. They're not as far along in their design, because they want to get the annexation done, get the rezoning done. But at the same time, the city has negotiated conditions as part of the plan development to ensure that this is a good development for this spot, and doesn't have a negative impact, and hopefully, a positive impact on the surrounding community. Water and sewer are not available, but that will be addressed at plating. The applicant has also proposed to provide a traffic impact analysis, just to evaluate traffic. Of course, data centers are very low traffic generators, and also, in terms of customers, well, customers don't go to data centers, and low volumes of employees as well. And so, the east outer loop alignment, we'll talk about that when we get to the conditions. Our development review committee did review this on August 7, and all comments were addressed. So, 19 notices were sent out to property owners within 200 feet, and we did see one that was returned in disagreement, property owner just to the north. None returned in agreement. Newspaper posted or published the agenda item on August 7, in the Temple Daily Telegram. And so, here are eight conditions that we discussed during the workshop. And what I've highlighted are three that the applicant has requested to defer to the next reading. There are questions, still more discussion that need to be had, but I'll go over these one by one. So, that first one is access. They have concerns about the site plan showing those exact access points at those specific locations of Bob White. So, more discussion needs to be had between now and then. Once again, there, these are unknowns, and I think, you know, understandably, the applicant wants, wants it to be a known before they can commit to that. Site plan modifications in the future could be done administratively, landscaping and screening, in addition to just meeting our general standards for landscaping, but also providing additional buffering and screening between residential uses or residential zoning districts. The second item that would be requested to be addressed at the second reading is related to noise mitigation. We had a healthy discussion with council during the workshop just about this, what that would include. And so, just to evaluate, give a little bit more time for us to provide a more detailed recommendation and work with the applicant in the meantime. Number five, the outer loop alignment. So, they have requested specific language. This was provided yesterday. We need a little bit more time to evaluate that. Number six is not in question, that they enter into a utility services agreement, just to ensure that the impact on our utilities, water, you know, electrical, which, of course, is not ours, but in terms of overall impact on public utilities. But that also includes, if any damage is done to our public infrastructure during the construction, you know, they've agreed to all this as well, but just to clarify, that they'd be responsible for repair or replacement as needed. Right-of-way dedication, wherever that east outer loop alignment ends up, they have agreed to dedicate the right-of-way, if it's within that property. And then, the last item is not requiring a preliminary plat, which our code right now, if it's 100-acre tract or larger, requires a preliminary plat. We're in agreement that if they plat all of it, all 702 acres, we can see how all of that functions together. They don't need to take that extra step, as long as it's divided into five or fewer lots. They're in complete agreement with that. So, the, yeah, so really, it's going back to those three items, one, four, and five. It would be our recommendation, and really, the request by the applicant, to defer those to second reading, but to approve everything else. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, anything for Brian?
And the applicant, of course, is here. Sorry.
So, just for clarification on the motion language, do we need to specifically call out items one, four, and five to not approve at this time? How does that language need to happen?
My recommendation is that you would just approve it on first reading as presented here.
Come back.
With the understanding that staff will continue to work with the applicant on clarifying the items they've requested, as well as the additional language council has requested on noise mitigation.
Easy enough. Council, nothing for Mr. Chandler? Item A is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on it may do so. As usual, please step to the podium or raise your hand.
Mr. Lidle.
Mr. Lidle? Alan?
Good evening. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
But, I brought this up in planning and zoning, and I'll bring it up again. I don't know what kind of noise it's going to be, but hopefully, it won't be enough to wake the dead. I run a cemetery out there fairly close to this location, but I do also have occasionally, we have gray side services, so I don't know, like I say, I don't know how much noise comes out of here, or how far it travels, and just wonder if, when they do this study, if those around us will be able to hear this here, or be present at their homes or locations when they do this study, so we can tell what kind of noise they're going to have, or we'll get results of that, or how far a field this noise carries.
Yes, sir. That will all be addressed. Anything else, Alan?
No, sir. Thank you.
Anyone from the audience? At this time, I'll close the public hearing on item number eight. Council, I'll entertain a motion on item number eight.
Mayor, I move to approve item eight.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Council, please cast your vote. Item eight passes five votes to zero. Again, congratulations. Moving on to item nine, is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit to allow substance abuse treatment facility on .16 plus or minus acres, located in the Freeman Heights addition, city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as 118 South 25th. Mr. Chandler.
All right. Thank you, mayor. And as I forgot to do at the previous one, I'm going to not make the mistake again and mention that the applicant is here, in case y'all have any questions after the presentation. And so, here you can see that this is at the northwest corner of West Avenue B and South 25th Street. And you'll probably recognize this building. It's been vacant for a while, and it's been a number of uses over the years. And so, this site, in addition to being an existing building, what you see on the screen here in terms of the site plan, shows existing parking spaces, existing trees, landscaping. But this is only .16 acres, so, pretty tight site, very, very urban, zone general retail. And this is a proposed outpatient facility, so no medications are administered, it's just counseling and therapy. However, our Unified Development Code defines this as a substance abuse treatment center, despite the fact that this is just inpatient, and this is just counseling, and therefore, it requires a CUP by our interpretation. And so, they intend to renovate the existing building. What is shown on here, 14 parking spaces, the applicant understands that 12 are needed, you know, by our use table. And so, they're, they've agreed to eliminate the two adjacent to 25th, because, of course, existing parking spaces, people come, you know, backing out onto Avenue B, and that just eliminates some of those potential conflicts between people taking a right-hand turn from 25th while someone's backing out. So, that does meet our code, and they've agreed to that. They'll provide landscaping and screening, I believe fencing. The sidewalks are there, refuse container on the site plan, that dumpster on the backside also screened. Ah, thank you. All right. So, current zoning, general retail, future land use identifies this as urban residential, which, that does allow neighborhood-serving uses, and the applicant has indicated that, yes, this is, you know, that is typical, that they would have people that live nearby using these counseling services. So, 20 notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet. We did receive one in agreement on the east side of 25th, and five responses in disagreement. And you can see where all those came from. That is a 12% calculation. Of course, if it hit 20, it would trigger a supermajority vote, or four out of five by council, but it's below that 20% threshold. And Temple Daily Telegram printed this in the August 14 newspaper. And so, when we evaluate the compliance criteria for a conditional use permit, in terms of compatibility with the neighborhood, adequate utilities, drainage, access movement, you know, once again, those parking spaces are in existence. The applicant would be required to get a street use license if the zoning is approved, and they understand that, to be able to bring those parking spaces into compliance, which they had not been previously. But also, in terms of dust, you know, odors, et cetera, there should be no impact on the neighborhood, lighting, you know, ensuring that any lighting is fully shielded and prevents light trespass, and then sufficient landscaping and screening are provided and will be enhanced with future landscaping and fencing. So, staff recommends approval with the following conditions, you know, including, number one, the street use license that I mentioned, compliance with our screening and buffering requirements, ensuring site compliance during the permitting stage with the site plan, but also other standards. That includes removal of those two parking spaces next to 25th, the installation of planter boxes for additional landscaping, and then repair and resurfacing of the existing parking lot. Planning and zoning voted six to one to recommend approval of the conditional use permit on August 18. And I'm happy to entertain any questions. And, of course, the applicant is as well.
Thank you. Council, anything for Mr. Chandler?
We mentioned this in workshop, just that it's unfortunate that our code says substance abuse treatment facility instead of substance abuse counseling center or something, because I feel like the responses and disagreement are, have a different idea of what this is going to be.
Sure.
So, this is very much, from what I understand, an eight-to-five sort of business, and no overnight stays.
Correct.
So, I'm hopeful that the neighbors will hear this and realize that it's not going to be a nuisance. I think it's going to be a benefit for the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so. As you step to the podium, state your name or raise your hand on the platform. Anybody on the platform?
We had some people drop off rejoining. If you'll give me just one second, please.
Anybody from the audience?
Mr. Lidle has his hand up, but I, we're having some technical difficulties. I'm not sure he can...
He's also muted, again, it looks like, from here.
Yeah.
Can you hear us, Mr. Lidle?
Alan?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This is Alan.
Yes.
Real stuck, I guess.
What?
We're having issues. It's in a loop.
Okay.
So, he may not be able to...
Should he be able to hear us?
Never mind.
Tell him, if you want to, chat him back and tell him that we can hear him, if he would like to, to proceed. He may not be able to hear us, but we can hear him.
I keep, might have just been trying to tell us that we're having issues.
Okay.
Potentially.
Okay. So, we can just move on, Kathy? I guess we have to. Okay. Very good. Then I will close the public hearing, reserving the right to reopen it if we get Mr. Lidle back. Moving on to item 11. Do we need to go ahead and vote on it? Even with closing the public hearing?
Right. We're not statutorily required to be on.
Virtually? Okay. Okay. Yeah. Very good. All right. Then, I'm sorry, we will, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And counsel, I will entertain a motion on item 10.
Nine. Five to nine.
Are we on nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve item nine.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item nine passes five votes to zero. Who is the applicant? Two things. Congratulations on the approval. Thank you for the work that you're going to do there.
I want to say something. Nine eight eight is the suicide hotline.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And that building's been empty for a while, too. So, thank you for the work, and thank you for getting that building reactivated. Good luck. All right. Moving on to item 10, first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning request from commercial to planned development to family dwelling to allow an accessory dwelling unit on .127 plus or minus acres in the Jones and Moore addition, part of Lot 1, Block 18, located in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as 709 South 13th Street. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, this is the last time you'll hear from me this evening, I promise, and I will sit down after this. But we have another planned development. This one is actually downzoning residential property from commercial to family, but also with the planned development to allow an accessory dwelling unit. And so, this is .12 acres, and so, very different than the other planned development at 702 acres. We're getting to the most micro level of zoning. And so, here you can see the lot. It is close to West Avenue G, so two lots just to the south of West Avenue G. And this is in the Midtown Neighborhood Planning District, which does call for infill development and higher-density residential. It's very close to Jones Park, where having that additional high density is deemed to be appropriate. Accessory dwelling units are not allowed by right in the zoning district, but the cities love where you build program that includes city-approved plan sets, as well as zoning overlays that would allow these with conditions in the future. Of course, staff is working very hard under Aaron Smith's leadership. Also, Christina Strickland, case manager here, are, like I said, working very hard on that and bringing them forward. But this would be, if approved, the first use of the city-approved plan sets. And we'll show you in a second what this one looks like. And so, we would call this a CAPS. That's the acronym, City Approved Plan Sets. Product Tester, and the Development Review Committee reviewed this on July 21st, and no issues were identified. And so, here it is. This is the Hawthorne, single-story accessory dwelling unit, sometimes called granny flats, mother-in-law suites. They got a bunch of names, but technically, it's an accessory dwelling unit. 440 square feet.
What about the grandfathers?
I don't know.
Father-in-law?
Yeah. I know. We need, yes. We need to evolve in terms of our terminology.
They doll, too soon.
Yes.
That's what it is. That's what it is. That's from without.
Too good for grandfathers.
Perfect for Papa.
Yes. Perfect for Papa as well. And so, you can see there are two different styles, two different facades, a modern style and a craftsman style. And the applicant is here. Honestly, I'm not sure which one she prefers. I think it's the craftsman. All right. There we go. Which would be consistent with the architecture for the house that she owns. And so, here's the accompanying site plan. You can see how that building be oriented in the back. It is adjacent to an alley, and alley access is agreed to, that's encouraged by the neighborhood plan, and would be codified with, if this is approved. And then, all the other, the setbacks would be met as well. And so, yes, you can see, here's the existing home, and the craftsman style fits in very well with the existing architecture at this house, really with the rest of the neighborhood. And so, you can see neighboring properties, including a new single-family home nearby, and property to the west, and then commercial property across the street to the northwest. And so, the comprehensive plan identifies this area as future urban residential, which also is focused on conserving neighborhoods. And so, this is, this is a great example of ways to also increase affordable housing opportunities, but also for the property owners to improve, you know, build, enhance equity on their property, discourage demolition of existing homes like the one that she owns. So, anyway, by all measures, it is consistent with the comp plan. 13th Street is a local street. No trails are shown adjacent to or nearby this property. The alley access to the rear, of course, is in the neighborhood plan. 13th Street has been identified as a pedestrian connector, so at some point could transition to a project to widen that sidewalk or create a trail there. And then, as we mentioned before, the plan does encourage higher-density housing. And so, evaluating the comprehensive plan, the different segments of the plan, and compliance with this proposal, staff's interpretation is that it meets all of them. 15 notices were sent out, and one was returned in agreement, but that was the applicant. So, no one other than the applicant returned a notice. And so, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. One, that it would limit it to one ADU, one accessory dwelling unit, that the minimum rear setback of five, minimum side setback of five as well. Just clarifying that that's a side-facing structure, that that is allowed, that the alley must be cleared for adequate access. That would be on the owner, the owner's responsibility to address that, of course, working with us and Public Works, just to make sure, because that's still owned by the city, that the ADU provides two off-street parking spaces in addition to the two required for the home. Number eight is an important one. There's an existing privacy fence, and for future emergency access, to add a gate, just so that if there happened to be a fire in the ADU in the future, the hose, it can easily get through that gate, pull the hose to it. And then, lastly, the use of the Hawthorne, city-approved plan set. And so, PNZ recommended by a vote of five to two for approval. And so, actually, we followed up with those who voted against it, and, you know, I think they had some concerns about traffic and density, and, but at the same time, you know, we're comfortable with recommending approval. And happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you.
Brian, just out of curiosity, can you show me on the map where the two parking places would be?
Yes, sir. So, actually, those blue lines are just the rough parking location. They would be from the alley and adjacent to the accessory dwelling unit. So, that is actually not to scale. That is more of just where, what's the location going to be?
Yeah.
But they would have to be minimum of nine by 18 to meet our parking standards.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Counsel, anything else for Brian?
For Brian, but I'm excited for Ms. Morales. This is, we appreciate you using one of our love where you build plans. This is a first for us, so you're kind of our guinea pig. But thank you so much. We wish you the best.
Yep. Very good. Okay. Item 10 is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so. As you step to the podium or raise your hand. Nothing? No one from the audience? All right. Counsel, I will entertain a motion on item 10. Move approval. Have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. This item passes five votes to zero. Again, congratulations and thank you. Item 11 is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a negotiated settlement between Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tex Division, regarding the company's 2025 rate review mechanism filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopted tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, approving and attachment establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiree medical benefits, requiring the company to use ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meeting Act, adopting a savings clause declaring an effective date, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and ACSC's legal counsel. Mr. Bandis?
I'm actually going to pinch-hit.
Mrs. Davis?
Right. Thank you, counsel. You may recall, actually, do I need to go down there and get the clicker?
We'll get Frank.
I don't know why you didn't, Brian. Did you want to do this one?
No.
I mean, you were up there, and you were such a role. All right. You may recall, a couple of months ago, we talked about a similar issue with the Encore rate increase. So, this is a very, very similar process to include, we're a member of a steering committee that's of cities served by Atmos, works just the way that the Encore Steering Committee serves 180 cities in existence since the late 1990s. It's, they came up and grew up alongside each other. The, actually, instead of the PUC as a states, the, one big difference, though, is the gas is regulated through the Railroad Commission rather than the PUC. All right. And there's also a different review mechanism. The statute has a process called the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, or GRIP program, and it sets out the mechanism for reviewing rate increases and rate adjustments. And it really does not have the ability for cities to negotiate for a better deal, which ended up with a lot more litigation in front of the Railroad Commission. So, the Atmos and the Steering Committee got together and came up with their own process, which is called the Rate Review Mechanism, or the RRM, which does allow for negotiation, similar to what happens with Encore, which ends up with a better deal for the cities and less time in front of the Railroad Commission. All right. So, on April 1st of this year, we received the Atmos application to increase their rates, and they sought a 245 million increase system-wide, with 177 million attributable to the RRM cities, which includes Temple. They were attempting to recover 1.4 billion spent on system-wide infrastructure improvements between January 23 and December 24. And as part of the RRM process, they were able to negotiate a 205.6 million settlement down from the 245 million original ask. That equates to a $7.83 residential bill increase monthly, or about just over a 9% increase. And then, the average commercial bill will see a 6.5% increase in the average amount of $25.73 per month. Again, we have jurisdiction, counsel does, over the gas rates within our boundaries. And a little bit different, we've in the past adopted these by resolution, but a more recent review of the charter language, it's a little unclear whether we should be doing these by ordinance. So, just to be on the safe side, we're beginning to handle these by ordinance. So, you will see these coming forward as, in this part of the meeting, subject to a public hearing and two readings, of course. So, what happens if we don't approve? Then the GRIP higher rates would go into effect. And then, of course, if we challenged that or denied that increase, then they would appeal, and then we would be on our own defending our action in front of the Railroad Commission. That's the language that you just read, Mayor. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any. And October 1st is the effective date.
Okay. Very good. Counsel, anything for Ms. Davis? Item 11 is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so.
No one.
No, Alan?
No one.
Okay. Anyone from the audience? All right. I will close the public hearing, counsel on item 11, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve item 11 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item 11 passes five votes to zero. It is currently 6:15. Thank you all for attending, and this meeting is adjourned.